We're going to begin our presentation. So first of all, I'd like to welcome you to Allinae Martin. Thank you for joining us for our IBT Info Evening. My name is Mr. Ali. I'm going to be emceeing, really, really short, but emceeing for the evening. Our wonderful staff will be joining us throughout the building in various locations. I'll be sharing the map at the end of the presentation. But they're all here wanting and willing to connect with you, to answer some questions, kind of share their experiences and perspectives, along with a lot of student volunteers. I think we had about forty students volunteer to help out for tonight because we're very excited to share with you. An overview of our evening. We're going to start with student presenters. And then our administration's going to share the RLCP overview slides. There will be an opportunity for questions and answers in various locations. So the gym, they have labs, science lab, music room. And as mentioned, there's going to be an optional school tour, which I encourage you to take. So we're going to begin with our student presenters.
Good evening, everyone. We are great IBT students from Allinae Martin. Today, we will be discussing what Allinae Martin offers in its regional IBT program and the many opportunities that come along. My name is Ali.
My name is Ardia.
My name is Ammon.
My name is Shahir.
And my name is Yen.
And we are the student representatives leading tonight's Info Night.
Before we start, here's below to provide a short video that gives you the highlights of our school.
The IBT is a very profound and elegant program where it allows you to explore the real world. Keeping scenarios and taxes, financial literacy elements allows you to take a step further and know the reality of the real world and how to deal with it.
Allinae Martin is a very positive space. From the students to the staff, they're always there to help you. For example, the staff is always there for you whenever you feel down or feeling stressed. You can walk into the merit room, which is where the guidance council sits, and they can help you out if you're feeling stressed or you need to talk. The guidance council team and the teachers are very helpful. And if you're ever feeling a bit behind, they're going to be there and they're going to take their time away from their day to help you out.
The IBT program offers a wide range of places which you can study and offer such as the kit, the cave, the learning lab, and the learning hall, which leads you to go to study and use a library.
Allinae Martin has lots of number one sports teams, including basketball, football, volleyball, soccer, ice hockey. We've placed first in the entire field of major throughout most of this year and most of last year. And being on an Allinae Martin sports team makes you feel like you're a part of a community, a family, and those kind of thoughts that you make with your teammates or your coach, even with yourself, after you've tired of everything you're going to do today.
Clubs, students, and everyone who is in the description, whether they're sixth, seventh, or eighth graders, anybody can put a question to them in club. Anything you can imagine in the classroom, whether it's sports, duchets, drivings, chess, rugby, skate, really anything.
So say yes.
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 And say yes.
Say yes to the IBT program at Allinae Martin.
And we hope to see you here next time.
In this presentation, we will be talking about what the IBT program is all about. I have the IBT program at Allinae Martin's, IBT year-end projects, extracurricular and leadership opportunities, field trips, the school environment, and if this program is right for you.
To begin, we'll talk about what the IBT program is all about, preparing students for the world of tomorrow. The IBT program at Allinae Martin's. The IBT syllabus is focused on business, where students learn about financial literacy. Technological knowledge, where students gain a great understanding about coding and different uses of media. Entrepreneurships, where students create companies, pitch products, and sell them. While students are learning all these crucial skills, they develop leadership and critical thinking and have peer support all the way through.
IBT students are privileged to have exclusive access to tons of new, high-quality tech. The learning lab has IMAX and notebooks, VR headsets, mirrors, a closet of iPads plus Apple pencils, a closet of Chromebooks, duty printers, cricket machines, and much more high-quality tech. As an extension to the program, IBT students get to participate in an instrumental program. Students choose one of the many back instruments and learn it over the course of three years in their middle, in their middle school experience. Some examples include saxophone, flute, clarinet, and trumpet. The cost to rent an instrument can vary between $160 to $400, depending on the instrument. But most importantly, there's absolutely no price difference of instruments required.
Ontario is an IBT extension of a subject that is added alongside all your other subjects, such as math, language, music, science, and law. This project, this subject focuses on business and the technological aspects of the IBT program. In this subject, you learn how to become a true leader, sell and manage companies, pitch products, and so much more.
Year-end projects in the IBT program. The IBT program is about giving young entrepreneurs a glimpse of the business world. Here are the major year-end projects to help you get started. So in grade six, we have Beyond Me. Following up in grade seven, we have the Food Truck. And to sum up, your entire IBT experience, Trade Show on grade eight.
Beyond Me is a project where students investigate a social justice problem and explore solutions. The charity chosen by the top group will receive a contribution on their behalf.
In grade seven, students participate in Food Truck. Students are tasked to create a food truck with either a food or a drink and sell it to the students at Allinae Martin. After making profit, students get to keep half the profit and the other half goes to a charity they choose to support.
Last, but certainly not least, the grade eight year-end project is Trade Show. In Trade Show, students make a physical product to sell at school and after school. This project is the highlight of the entire IBT program. And as a bonus, students keep 100% of all profit they make.
Allinae Martin field trips. Five major field trips that every student in Allinae Martin gets to go on are Discovery Week with the Raptor Zeta Phi Games, ski activity trips, watching the Toronto Symphony, and the grade eight year-end trip. In Discovery Week, students receive a combination of three field trips. And these field trips spend over three days. And in the grade eight year-end trip, we go to a major city in Canada such as Montreal or Ottawa and explore it with our friends for a week.
Now for the IBT exclusive field trips. There are five major IBT exclusive field trips. There are the Tree Truck Trekking, the One of a Time Show, which is an adult version of Trade Show, the Ontario Science Center, the Royal Ontario Museum, and the Hamilton Military Museum.
Allinae Martin extracurricular activities. Allinae Martin offers a wide range of sports. Students can choose to participate in. We have a flat football team, a senior and junior volleyball team, a soccer team, a senior and junior basketball team, a cross country team, an ice hockey team, a softball team, and many, many more.
Allinae Martin has a huge variety of clubs. We have clubs run by the school. We have clubs run by the teachers. And we have clubs run by our very own students. We have an athletic council and announcement team, library leaders, art club, chess club, a drama team, marching mentors, a band slash choir, a yearbook team, and many more to experience here at Allinae Martin.
Moving on, we'll be talking about the environment at Allinae Martin. Allinae Martin's school environment is awesome. As cliché as it sounds, students are kind and welcoming. We have caring teachers, supportive peers, lots of staff and students ready to help. And every student at Allinae Martin has a voice. We also have amenities to suit all sorts of needs, varying from rooms dedicated towards tech environments and the merit room, where students can simply take a break when needed.
The staff at Allinae Martin are phenomenal. The staff is really encouraging. The teachers help you out and give you advice so you can always improve and take the next step. We also have a really good guidance council so that they can help you with any problem you need, that's, you know, personal, academic, and just the staff is just great in general.
Is this program right for you? As a student or a person, are you a critical thinker? Are you cooperative? Do you take risks? Are you open-minded? Do you want to learn how to think like an entrepreneur? Do you have a strong work ethic? Are you a leader? Are you knowledgeable? Are you tech savvy? And most importantly, are you self-driven?
Thank you for taking the time out of your day to listen to our presentation. Now, we will hand the mic over to our principal and vice-principal.
Thank you very much to all of you at the Puck's Dynasty and Sharona, the principal here at Allinae Martin.
And I'm Jason Barmell, the vice-principal at Allinae Martin. And I just want to say our students did a fabulous job today. They were so well-prepared. We're going to be reading off papers and they memorized everything. So they did a fabulous job. Shout out to you all the great things that our school has to offer. So we get to do the not-so-exciting stuff of sharing the standard information the board has shared out. I remember when my children were going into grade six and I was trying to take notes about all these programs. But you don't need to do that. If you go to our school website, everything is posted on there. So everything you need to know, just go back to the website and you'll find all that information there. So the Regional Learning Choices Program empowers students for providing an opportunity to develop and explore skills in a particular area of interest. The Peel District School Board offers seventeen Regional Learning Choice programs. Six elementary programs beginning in grade six. The arts program, whoever at Queen Elizabeth, begins in grade seven. And there are eight secondary programs beginning in grade nine. This is up there with the Peel Board that you can take a look at the website. You go to programs, students' programs, and you can find all the Regional Learning Choice programs there. So while these programs begin in grade six, it's an entry point to grade eight, as I wanted to also mention. And for some reason, your child did not get into one of the programs in grade six. That doesn't stop them from getting to high school. I can tell you my own child didn't even apply. Didn't care about it in middle school, but finally high school got in. So it doesn't mean if you're here now, why don't you get into high school? Because you don't, there's always multiple entry points. So just a note out, as Ms. Sharona mentioned. So if you do participate in the Regional Learning Choice Program in grades six, seven, and eight, that does not automatically mean that you will be accepted into the same program in high school. That's a separate application process. And also a note that if you are here as a student on a visa, you cannot apply to the Regional Learning Choice Program unless you are on a student visa. Like, there's different kinds of visas. So if you're here on a student visa, you can. But if you don't have a student visa, you can't apply. Okay, so we have lots of elementary regional programs that are available. And you can see the list that's up here. And of course, we have Allinae Martin, Lizgar, and Williams Parkway, which offer IBT programs. But there's a selection of other programs available at a variety of locations. And if you want information on each of those programs, you can access that on the Board of Regional Learning Choices website. So again, on your way in, you will have seen that there was a QR code to give you a map for the school. There are also QR codes throughout this presentation. It will take you to further information about the program. This presentation will be made available online. So please don't worry about having to make copious notes tonight. It will be available for you to review. And again, our school website has lots of information. See, we're already off script. So the program at Allinae Martin is something that is quite important for where you apply to the program. So we're hoping that everybody who is here tonight is within our boundaries. So if you are in Peel District School Board or the Duffer and Peel Catholic School Board or a private school within the region of Peel, you can apply to the Regional Learning Choice Programs. So as long as you meet the program criteria. And then, once we have accepted all of students within Peel, if you're applying from outside of Peel and you meet the criteria, your application will also be considered. And if you're uncertain, if you are within the Allinae Martin boundaries, you can now go to find your school and you can enter your home address and it will give you the Regional Learning Choice Programs that you can apply to. And this shows sort of the map where we are within Allinae Martin. It's kind of the 403 and sort of up to the 401. And so it's quite a large area that we accept student applications from. Okay, so for Regional Learning Choice Programs, all regional programs are based on the Ontario curriculum, with each program focusing on a particular lens and area of study. So for the application process, so the entry point for all elementary regional programs is grade six, except, as I mentioned earlier, the arts program at Queen Elizabeth, which begins in grade seven. So students who are interested in applying to any of the RLCP programs will be required to meet the eligibility criteria that is specific to the program of interest. So applications for elementary regional programs will open from January 23rd, maybe 30 a.m., to February 7th, 2023, at 3 p.m. So those times are firm. If you call me at 3:01 and say you missed it, I can't help you because that's controlled by the board. So the timings are also important. The application link will be made available on the elementary RLCP page. And it's indicated up there, again, on the board website. And again, if you go to the Allinae Martin website, we have a lot of this information there. And links are being created for when that happens. If you click on those links as well. This slide is one of the most important ones that you will want to pay attention to this evening because, as Ms. Sharona said, the timelines are firm. We have no leeway to work around these. So you will see that the application program opens on January 23rd, 8:30, closing on February 7th at 3:00. The first round of offers are made on April 4th after 3 p.m. And there will be just over a week where you can make your decision as to will you accept the program. The second round of offers opens on April 12th at 3 p.m., closing on the 18th, sorry. The second round opens on the 18th, closing on the 24th. At that point in time, then, there's kind of a few months wait because we do sometimes have a waitlist of students. And some students will have an opportunity to get accepted at that time. But I will tell you, those numbers are fairly slim. I think last year, did we, we had maybe one or two students from our waitlist. Yeah. So just, just to be very aware of those timelines. And if you're out of country, the timelines still apply, so. So this is important as well. And this is something that our board would like to acknowledge. And this is due to the fact that historically, we have had a great under-representation of students who identify as African Black, First Nations, Inuit, and Métis. So in an attempt to address some of those previous harms that would have been caused through our process, there is a self-identification process. So if you are a student who self-identifies as Black, African, First Nations, Inuit, and Métis, and you meet the criteria for admission, you will be accepted into our process without going through the random selection. And that random selection process, I need you to know, is nothing to do with us as a school. That is a board process. And what happens is... Oh, it's later on, it's not the next slide. So... So that self-identification process is important for you to know and be aware of if you are a student who identifies as one of those categories. So also, please note regarding fees, that all regional programs include a non-refundable application fee, an annual program fees. So all RLCP application fees are $40, which are non-refundable. And the annual IBT fee, what paid while you attend the school every year, is $200 per year. Okay, so in terms of financial supports, which are available, financial supports are available for families who are interested in applying for Regional Learning Choice Programs. For assistance with the application fee, you can speak with your current principal. So if there's a concern with the application fee, speak to your child's current principal. And if you are a current PDSP student, that is, if you're a current PDSP student. If you are from outside of PDSP, please speak with a principal at the RLCP school. And if you need assistance with program fees, please connect with a principal at the RLCP school after you have been offered a spot in a program. So if you've been offered a spot and you need assistance and you can call and reach out to me, we will see what we can do to support that. So once you have successfully applied to an RLCP program, you will receive a confirmation email shortly after that application has been submitted online. Please do, if you, if you don't receive the email right away, please do wait for 24 hours to contact the school because sometimes it takes 24 hours for the system to update. So if you haven't received an email sort of between 24 and 48 hours, please reach out and let us know because there may have been a glitch with the application. So this is the random selection process that I referred to in an earlier slide. And so applications are offered, or applicant spots are offered on a two-step process. So once a student applies, there will be a review of the report cards. And as it indicates, many programs also have a participation component. And at Allinae Martin, for the IBT program, we do have a participation component. And that is considered as part of the application process. So it's not simply report card marks. It's also that participation component. So once that's been completed, both steps, if the student meets the application criteria, then that application is entered into a random selection process for each program that you apply to. So if you're going to choose to apply to two programs, this process applies separately for each program. So what happens is, all of those applications are put into a computer process, a computer system, which randomly assigns application numbers. And that is how the application process. So you may be randomly assigned the number 10. You may be randomly assigned number 25. It, it's, any student who meets the criteria is input into the system. And again, as I mentioned, any students who self-identify and meet the criteria will be accepted into the process, into the program, without being put through the random selection process. And again, we don't complete that random selection. So I know we've had calls and requests from families wondering why their child was provided to a certain number. But that's nothing to do with us at the school level. It's a board level. Quite literally with the random process, we know what they, everybody's put into the lottery and the numbers have been assigned. And we just get to see those numbers. We can't change them, we can't do anything. We just see what the computer has assigned to each one of the students. So in terms of the participation component, over the last two years, due to COVID, it's been a difficult sort of process done online because you weren't in the buildings necessarily or could it be mixing people? But we're kind of sort of back to normal here. So this year, our participation component will be in person. So applicants will be required to complete an individual writing, reading, and math assessment. And they will also participate in collaborative problem-solving challenge. So our participation component is taking place on February 16th. So if you've applied to the program, the applications, as we mentioned, open on January 23rd. On our school website, there's also a link that will become live on January 23rd to sign up for your time slot for the participation component. So we're looking at students participating either at 3:00, 4:00, 5:00, or 6:00 p.m. for their assessments on January 16th. And again, it is in person. So... Oh, it's February 16th, sorry, I just didn't hear them. But it is February 16th is the participation component. So in terms of offers, acceptances, and waitlists, each regional program has a specific number of spots of offers and acceptances that will be sent to that specific... offers and acceptances will be sent to that specific number of applicants. So in our school, it is 96. We have three classes in grade six. So that will be the number of students accepting to our school.
Right, it's actually 94. Is it 94?
Oh, it's 84.
Well, there are going to be more spots than we actually have. So it's 84. So if a student applies to multiple programs and has been offered acceptances and accepts that offer, it will automatically be removed to other programs that they apply to. So if you're considering applying to more than one program and you accept a program, you will be removed from the list of the other programs that you may have given acceptance to as well or on the waitlist for, you'll be removed from them. Once all available spaces in the specific Regional Learning Choices Program have been offered, all remaining students will be placed on the school's waitlist and will be offered a spot if one is available during the second round. So again, if you are given a spot on the waitlist, we assign a number on that waitlist. And so when spots, spots become available, we start with number one on the waitlist and continue to work our way down if necessary until all the spots are filled to 84. And I am going to turn around and read this because I want to make sure I got it right. So all eligible, all regional programs are open to all eligible students. Students who meet the criteria for acceptance to the programs who live in Peel, so that's Brampton, Callahan, and Mississauga, will be offered a spot first. Students who live, who meet the program criteria but live outside of the Peel region will be offered a spot once all local students have been made an offer. In some cases, all spots may be offered to students who live in Peel. And students who live in Peel can only apply to regional programs that are within the boundary where they live. So that's really important. The Peel Board considers all Peel students, not just Peel Board students, before it considers those applicants from outside of Peel. RLCP boundaries are honored based on address. I won't go into transportation in any great detail just to let you know that there is no transportation offered through our Peel Board. It's private transportation. And we do have a representative from GGAAM who is in the front foyer, who has an information leaflet and will be able to answer any questions that you have related to transportation. All right, so with regards to busing, students who are not within the Peel region or are new to Peel can also apply for Regional Learning Choices Programs. All non-Peel Board students must submit their required documentation online in their application form and or email it to the school when applying for the program. Current year progress and term one report cards can be uploaded together. Schools may request original documentation at a future date when the documentation can be provided to the school. So I just wanted to mention, too, as Barmell mentioned about the boundaries. So it's really important to note that in Mississauga, there are two IBT schools, us and Lizgar. So you have to be sure that you are in our boundaries to be at our school. Whereas in Brampton, there is only one at Williams Parkway. So everybody in Brampton and Callahan goes to Williams Parkway. So make sure that when you're applying that you are in our boundary and not Lizgar's boundary. All right, and I think that's how we understand it at this moment, Mr. Ali. I'll turn it back over to you.
Alright, and I think that's how we understand it at this moment, Mr. Ali. I'll turn it back over to you.
Sure. Just a quick note from our guidance and support staff. They just wanted to share their contact information if you had any further questions. Again, just, just rest assured that all the information will be shared at the end of the presentation. I'm going to jump to that quickly. So just really quickly, just to review, it's February 16th here at Allie Martin for our participation event. There are going to be four time slots available, 3, 4, 5, and 6 p.m. The assessment itself is going to be 45 minutes. It's being composed of a reading, writing, math, and participation component. Again, the application period, just to review, February, sorry, January 23rd from 8:30 a.m. until February 7th at 3:00 p.m. Our socials here, our website, informally Bitly, our Instagram and Twitter. Again, if you want access to the slide deck, it is at this Bitly here, 2023IBT, QR code there as well. And again, if there are any questions, there's going to be a lot of people around the building to answer. I'll be in this space to answer questions by the program. Ms. Penfold is also going to be here to answer questions at the program and academics. Our students who presented are going to be right over here answering any questions that they have. Our administrators are also be available to answer questions. Throughout the building, in the pit, the lab, music room, learning commons, and science lab, those wonderful people I showed you at the beginning of the presentation are going to be there to answer questions as well. And again, for those of you that feel like you got all the information that you need, a very clear, comfortable process, we thank you all, and drive safely. So I'm just going to click the link and I'm just going to repeat through those last few slides. Okay, so thank you very much. I encourage you. Please take the tour.